Welcome all to the February 18th Town Council meeting. I believe we have a quorum, we have everybody, so let the record read that the entire Town Council is present. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
The United States.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Before we begin, I have a little bit of sad news to share. Mr. Patriarcha, who is the father of the first lady of North Beach, Tina Benton, just passed away. And he was a great guy. If you will, I'd just like to have a moment of silence for him. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We'll begin with the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any eyes have it? At this time, is there any public comment on any item that's on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move forward to approval of the minutes of the January 21st public hearings.
I have a question. On the minutes?
On the minutes of the January 21st?
Public hearing, yes.
Okay, let's get a second and then we'll take your question. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, proof.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a question, Larry?
Yes, Sharon, and I'm sorry, I don't recall this, but the opening paragraph of the summary of the public hearing minutes, the very last line mentions Lieutenant Naughton as having been present during that public hearing. I'm thinking that was.
I know, I caught that. But that'll be, it'll be corrected in the official minutes that are posted.
Thank you, Sharon.
And I'm sure Roddy's happy to be a captain. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Approval of the minutes of the January 21st Town Council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any eyes have it? Approval of the minutes of the February 8th work session.
Move to approve?
I think.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? And lastly, approval of the minutes of the February 8th closed session.
Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Okay. We'll begin with the Town Administrator's Report, and I believe Holly wants to lead off with sharing some updated information with the council before we take any questions. So it's all yours, Holly.
Thank you. Councilman Fabre asked that I provide an update on the Safe Routes to School project. I wanted to let Town Council know that we are planning to move forward applying for the 100% engineering and construction plan phase of the project. The date for that has not been released as to when we can apply for that, but both the Town Engineer and I had a virtual meeting with State Highway a couple of weeks ago, and we understand that that will open in the spring. And likely, we would expect to hear on award in the fall timeframe. So I just wanted to provide that update.
Thank you. Do we have, if anybody has any comments on the Town Administrator's Report, I'll start with Derek and work my way around the dais.
No questions, but boy, I've been waiting a long time to hear that. That's great news, Holly. Thank you very much for sharing that and look forward to getting that grant application in and get this project moving. It's been a little over four years so far. So this is, this is a great milestone.
Lot of good diligence on the. Yeah, okay, anyone else, Keith?
Just a quick question, maybe you can answer this, maybe not. The electric charging stations, I've not used one of those before, and I don't have an electric vehicle. I was just curious, do those take a charge card, like you can pay with your credit card? Or how do those work?
Yes, the payment is directly to BGE. They did come out on site and test them with an electric car recently, I think within the last week, if I'm correct. Jay can correct me if I'm not. But they did come out and test them, and I believe they are working and are live and online. BGE was supposed to supply the town information that we can distribute to citizens, so they're aware of how to use them. So we'll be getting that out here shortly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Not to interject real quick, Keith, there are several different ways to pay. It's all on each one. They're online now. You can use an app on your phone, credit card. There's about six different ways that you can pay. They're pretty up to date on all the things to do. So it's all self-explanatory once you get there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Greg?
No questions from me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, just as I have for the last several months, for the record, I just wanted to have on the record to continue to express the town's concern about delays with State Highway repairing the guardrail along Route 261. Thank you.
Charlie?
I just have a comment about the note here on Bayfront Park remains close to the general public. The sign that's up there, there are two signs that are up at the entrance to Bayfront Park that are really out of date. One mentions jellyfish season. And this is obviously not a priority for at all, especially given the weather, but it makes it look like it's like it's deserted and not watched rather than just officially closed. At some point, seems to me we ought to take down the jellyfish sign. I'd actually be happy to do it, but I think it requires tools, and I'm not good with tools. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bodine?
Yes, just one thing I wanted to point out was under operational updates, the fact that we added a new deputy, which I think we ought to highlight. I think this is a really wonderful thing. And I especially look forward to where it says increased patrol tracks by vehicle, foot and bike, especially foot and bike on the railway trail and on the other boardwalk. And this is, this is 100% Chesapeake Beach Deputy, and so I just wanted to highlight that more police coverage is coming.
Thank you. Next, Public Works Report. We've read Jay's report. If there's any questions, I'll just stick with you, Valerie, and work our way around. Any questions of Jay's report?
It's not so much a question, but a full-throated, thank you. Living where I do on Bayside Road, I have seen Public Works remove snow constantly through each event. And they are so on top of it. Jay, we cannot, as citizens, thank you enough, whether it be the sidewalks, the streets. I don't know how much time y'all are spending out there, but I think I heard the pall about every 30 minutes this evening. And it wasn't the state pall, it was y'alls, including doing the sidewalks. And I think that was especially important with this snow event, because I've never seen precipitation that came down as slush. I've seen rain, sleet, snow, freezing rain, but never slush. And it came down in slush. And so I'm just, thank you. Y'all did a, you're doing an amazing job, and you should be recognized.
Well, thank you, and I'll definitely pass that on to the staff.
And that, hey, Jay, that fellow that's cleaning that like, what looks like an ATV? That dude is just having way too much fun. I want his job.
Yeah, we found, we found that to be the most efficient way of doing the sidewalks. We have like 2.7 miles of sidewalks we do, and I don't know if you noticed this morning, we had a law, we kind of cleaned them up, and then we got hit with that slush, but it's the nature of Maryland in February.
Make no mistake, I'm not saying he was unsafe in any way. It just looked like in some ways he was having fun.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, a couple of things to throw in here. First of all, I.
We lost Charlie.
Guess Charlie froze. We could get back to Charlie if, when he unfreezes. He thaws, I should say.
He's back.
So I also, I also saw that guy on the four-wheeler, and I think maybe what Valerie's expressing is jealousy, because I know how much fun they can be in the snow when you're not actually doing work on them.
Absolutely, I am jealous.
So the last thing I wanted to say was a positive comment. I've noticed on the railway trail and the boardwalk that there is, have been a lot of repairs with the, you can see if anyone walks on those new planking and new, I don't know what the name of them for him is, but the new posts along the railings. So it's great to see that. It keeps, keeps things looking fresh and taken care of and groomed, and that's important. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Just echoing Councilmember Bodine's comments, congratulations and thank you to Jay and all the Public Works. I can only imagine what you guys have been through this summer with these storms hitting about every week and on the weekends. So thank you very much, and please share with everybody in Public Works. Thank you.
I will, I'll pass that on.
Mr. Morris?
Hey, Jay, good evening. Hot chocolate for the entire crew on days like today, right? I had a question about the water park. There was a leak that accessed by cutting through the concrete pool deck. Leak was repaired, weather permits. As you were going to repair the concrete, then white coat. Did you actually have to cut through a portion of the lazy river wall and not just the concrete deck?
Actually, it was the zero entry activity. When I say pool deck, I mean the interior. So you're right, yeah, the plaster white coat, correct?
And I don't doubt your judgment in having our crews do any of the work. I do want to say that. But is that something where? Have you considered the need to bring in a professional to fix any of that, or is that something that's easily in hand with our guys?
Well, we've done, we've, as Public Works have honestly probably done it about 30 times. So we, when we cut it out, we do the keystone. It's a small, it's a return, so it's only a foot and a half by a foot and a half when we cut it, if you're familiar with the keystone. So it's a wedge, and we put the rebar back up. On bigger scale things, we might get some outside help, but this is something that we can handle in-house.
Gotcha. Great job. That was it. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Greg. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no questions for Jay. I just want to echo the thanks that has already been expressed. Appreciate it very much.
Will do.
All right.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, Derek?
Yeah, same for me. Just echo that thanks. In fact, I heard some comments today in my area. People who actually had to venture out, they said the roads in Chesapeake Beach were infinitely better than our surrounding areas. So that's a testament to you and your guys, Jay. Great job.
Sure, and I want to make sure, you know, we definitely do all we can at Public Works, but we also have contracted helps, and I will make sure we mention, you know, tell them too, because they've done a great job too. It's been a long day, and we got some more to come tonight, but you know, that's what we do. We want to be safe, and we take pride in it, and we do, we do the best we can.
Thank you. Okay, next, Water Reclamation Treatment Plan Report. We've read John's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Vice President Fabre. Work my way down.
No questions from me, thanks.
Okay, Keith?
No questions.
Mr. Morris?
I have a follow-up regarding an executive session item. I sent an email inquiry to Holly this evening about it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Larry?
Just congratulations on passing the biotoxicity testing. I know that's an important part, so good job, and as I always do, once again, congrats on no spills for the most report. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
And lastly, Valerie?
Oh, nothing. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Code Enforcement Report, we've, we've read Connie's report. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Valerie. Work our way around.
I have no questions.
Charlie?
No, nothing for me.
Larry?
No questions other than the continued offer to help in any way to close out some of those open cases that have been with us for years. Thank you.
Greg?
No questions from me. Thank you.
And Keith?
No questions, thank you.
And lastly, Derek?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, next, we don't have a Town Treasurer's Report. As you all know, we're going to begin our budget work sessions. In fact, our next meeting, the March work session, so next couple of months, next three months will be full of budget stuff, and we'll be keeping our treasurer busy. So that'll be that. Town Engineers Report, we've read Wayne's report. Do we have any questions? If so, we'll begin with the Vice President Fabre.
Yeah, just a minor question. Actually, it's a clarification from my part. On the Highland Sewer Study, there's an acronym BRF. Could you remind me what that is?
Bay Restoration Funds.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Oh, yeah, I did have a couple of questions. Thank you.
All right.
Let's see here. At the Heritage, Wayne, are there written reports for your inspections?
My staff has not been doing inspections there. Jay's staff, we fill in as needed, as requested.
Okay, I saw that action, MGI, to continue infield construction monitoring as requested. But you're not monitoring all, you're just kind of in how? How are we certifying? I know a lot of the infrastructure is put in the ground out there. We have written reports to back up those inspections for posterity?
Yeah, that'd be, Jay and his crew can answer that question.
Can you hear me, Greg?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for everything that the town owns, the third-party inspections are going to do the infrastructure, the compaction, all that. For everything, water and sewer, we have an online sign-off date. I was there, pressure test. We're tying into actually part of Phase 3, and almost all of Phase 2 is done as far as infrastructure. Of course, Phase 1 is done and signed off. That's where they're building now. So it's actually online, and it's a file, and there's dates different than the we've done in the past. For example, Richfield Station, it's a lot better than paper plans, and there's ASVILs and stuff to go along with it.
Okay, I know you're on top of that. I just I had a comment, the Combs Field MGI, grading settlement control plans, removal of excess material for possible use on the field. That's intriguing to me, because I know the field is in the climate change arena. The field is subject to flooding in the future. And I'm interested if the safety and the practical use of dredge foils being used to raise elevations over at the facility.
We received test reports from the Army Corps of Engineers when they originally put the material in the DMP facility. And those reports suggested that it is simply sand-filled and is suitable for that placement. We currently have a contract out with a geotech engineer who's double-checking that and checking the material that we actually would like to take over to the field to confirm that is also the case. So we're double-checking that. If that's the case, then I can make a decision to decide whether we want to do that or not.
Awesome. And over at Richfield Station, the I know there were some permits that were renewed, revised, renewed with the developer there, back there near the trailhead. Is there any? There's a lot of interest in Richfield Station, and when that construction is going to get underway, because a lot of folks are looking forward to that being complete and getting that area cleaned up. Is there any timeline from the developer? I expect the builder to start out there in the springtime. Have you heard anything?
I spoke to the developer last week. He's still working on getting his cost estimates together for his public works agreement. Once he has that together, he expected in the next couple of weeks, he would get that to us to complete the public works agreement and start doing his plan to move forward.
Thank you, Wayne.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Larry?
Comments, one, given where we are in the calendar, might be time to drop the opening sentence on the transitional meeting, which was a year ago. Any updates on the heritage and the pump station plans, which were submitted in September?
They're approved and waiting for the applicant to provide the public works agreement information.
Great. Next one, on rod and reel plan was sent on May 1.
Correct, we're still waiting to hear from them.
They are, wow, okay. And then finally, just a nudge on the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant UV Protection. We've mentioned in the past about looking at the possibility of putting solar panels on top of those laundry covers. Thank you.
By the way, that is part of the request.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Charlie?
I just had a question about the elementary school review. I'm just curious, and this is really from my own education, what is the next step there? You guys are going to review the plans, or are you reviewing it for, for what? For approval or for recommendations? Or how does that work, and what's the timing on that?
We are reviewing it for engineering compliance and confirming that they meet all the code requirements of stormwater management. We want to make sure that the public water line that they're moving for us is where we want it to be, make sure there's no conflicts, basically looking at it from the town's interests. We reviewed the first set of plans they sent. However, they have revised them and recently sent us new plans. So we're now reviewing those. We're basically looking at it from an engineering perspective to make sure the town is protected.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Valerie?
Yeah, I actually had the same comment about getting rid of that first paragraph. It's probably time. I had a question on Fishing Creek dredging. So the dredge part, it says that y'all met with the USA Corps of Engineers and DNR on January 27th. And you're waiting for a review of completed USA Corps of Engineer drawings. And my question is this, is that the reengineering of the jetties? Or is it just the rising of the height of the jetties? What is their drawings?
Their drawings are for raising of the south jetty. It is also, they pretty much have that work done. They're also now working on a dredge project in Fishing Creek. They're going to try to put the two projects together. We have funding for that, and we're waiting for the completion of that second portion. They sent us some draft drawings, which you take a general look at, but they're not complete.
Okay, yeah, because I'm still, you know, interested in if there's a way that we can reengineer those in near future so that we can make the time between dredges a little bit longer.
I think that's their intention for the south jetty, by the way.
That's their intention.
Whole goal.
Because is it the suggestion that if they just raise the height on the south jetty, that that will take care of the sediment coming in from the bay? The waves that come in, you can see them on the north jetty also.
Yeah, they are certainly more interested in the south jetty. They see more littoral drift coming from the south and clogging up the inlet, and that is their intention, yes.
And then I had one more for you. Thank you. That was a good question. I liked that. I also had in mind that question about the rod and reel and the fact that the plan was sent almost a year ago. And I mean, what is, what if any remedy do we have as a town to have them respond to that plan? Because they're going forth with other projects. They've just been through one with planning and zoning. And so that's my question is, what, what remedy do we have to have them fulfill their responsibilities regarding a response to what we sent?
We have, we have two items that come to mind. One is a bond that we're holding for the Public Works Agreement, Public Works Infrastructure, which would not be released until that was complete. The second is exactly what you just said. They're coming through with other phases for planning and zoning, and we would be having these discussions as well before we approve anything on another phase.
You know, you say that, and I tend to agree with exactly what you said. And the question becomes, how do we ensure that that's implemented? And so whether it be Pat, Holly, the attorney, I think what Wayne just said is what we need to do, and that is, we sort of put a moratorium on on anything else until we get an answer regarding this, because why would we move forward on something new? When we want to have clarification on these many responsibilities? And so it's one thing to come up with an idea for a remedy, but it's another thing to see it come through. And so I'd just like to encourage us. So Wayne, can you keep this on your record? And I'll try to remember to ask you next month.
Sure.
You know, and really, that's what I'm asking for is a remedy. You know, what is our remedy? What is our recourse if they fail to respond? And that's all I had. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Next, we have the deputies' report. Before I go any further, I want to ask, I believe that Lieutenant Hollinger is on the call, and I'm going to ask him to inter.
I'm sorry, your last part of your message was broken up, Mayor. I didn't catch that.
I believe we have a new sergeant, and I was going to see if you want to introduce him to the council.
Yes, sir, yeah. He is on the call. This is Sergeant Gary Schroeder. He's going to be taking over for Sergeant Phelps. I personally selected Gary just based on his experience and knowledge. He's been with the Sheriff's Office for 18 years. And he's one of our best that we've got. And he also comes with a K-9 partner, so we got a two-for-one deal with Gary. So Gary, if you want to say hello.
Gary, you're on mute.
Eric, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gary Schroeder. I'm glad to be here. Just give you a little history about myself. I started law enforcement back in 1997 with the Washington DC Metropolitan Police Department. I was with them for a little bit over seven years, and I got hired down here in about 2004. I've been, I was a deputy on the road for several years. I was corporal for about seven years, and I've been a sergeant now for a little bit over four years. I've been on road patrol my whole career. Other than one year, I was in traffic safety. So I have, I believe I have a lot of knowledge and experience I can bring to the table, and I'm happy to be here. I'm ready to get working and get going.
It's a pleasure to have you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you.
What's the canine's name?
Maximus.
Don't let the dogs out.
Yeah.
Okay, we've read the report. If we do have any questions, I'll start with Dr. Bodine and work my way around. Any questions, Valerie?
When is your start date?
I've already started. I've been here February 1st, my first day.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Charlie?
Yes, very nice to meet you. I hope to meet you face to face and meet Maximus. I do have one fairly serious observation in the sheriff's report. I don't know what is appropriate in this meeting, but having having found this, I think, second-level drug paraphernalia in two different incidences, I'm wondering if you could tell us more about that. That's a bit of a concern to me to see that, not once but twice.
Right, from the research I did on those calls, they were actually traffic stops from the Drug Enforcement Unit. They were targeting individuals and following them around, and once they got the probable cause to make the stop, they had a mark unit make the stop and got the K-9 there and did a K-9 sniff and found the paraphernalia and the drugs in the vehicle. So it was, it was a targeted stop. It wasn't some random stop from random, random citizen. It was, it was a target stop by the Drug Enforcement Unit.
And are they Chesapeake Beach residents, can you say?
I don't recall if they were Chesapeake Beach residents. I think one was not, but I'm not sure about the other one.
Okay. If there's follow-up information in subsequent reports on that, on that topic, I, for one, as councilman, would love to be up to date on that.
Absolutely. If I hear anything more from them, usually what drug, the Drug Enforcement Unit does is they try to get people to work for them to get the bigger fish in the sea, so to speak. work for them to get the bigger fish in the sea, so to speak. They use them as stepping stones. So we really don't hear much from them because they kind of keep them on a download, uh, keep their identity hidden from the general public. But if I hear anything, I'll absolutely, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Thank you, Larry.
Uh, welcome to Chesapeake Beach Sergeant and Maximus. Um, thank you for your service and I look forward to meeting you, but hopefully it's on a social and not an official professional basis. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Very well said, Larry. Mr. Morris. Uh, yeah, great job, Sergeant Gary, welcome to the beach family.
Thank you.
Be safe and, and, and thank your crew for us, please, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Greg, uh, Keith?
Yeah, nice meeting you and, uh, great to have you aboard on the Chesapeake Beach Force. So, uh, but I, I don't have any additional questions, uh, on, on the report, uh, but, but welcome.
Thank you.
And Derek?
Yes, let me welcome you as well, uh, great to have you onboard. You got, you got a great team here in the beaches and, uh, we're, we're happy to, uh, have you join as well. So looking forward to, uh, many years of collaboration.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And before I leave Sergeant, I just want to echo the council's, you know, remarks about, you know, welcome to the beach. Um, we, you know, we like our police down here, so, uh, you'll, you'll find that the citizens will be very receptive to, to seeing you around. We're, we're, uh, that, that's just how we are, so, uh, welcome and I hope you're here for quite some time.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm be here for the duration.
Good, uh, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, if we do have any questions of the report, please forward them to, uh, to Larry. Thank you, next, um, Mayor's Report State of the, of the Town, be, uh, before I, I, I hand this over to, to Holly, we're going, uh, we're going video with this. I just want to, um, for, for those on the call, I, I just want to echo a, um, a pre-meeting comment that, uh, Councilman Morris made about, um, now that we're talking about COVID and now it's not the time to let your guard down. So I just want to reiterate that message over and over again. Having said that, now we're, we're proud to, uh, put forth the twenty twenty one State of the Town with Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. And, um, I'll let, I'll let Holly do her thing.
Hello, everybody. As we begin twenty twenty one, it is important to reflect on the events of the year twenty twenty. Twenty twenty provided the opportunity for us to observe and demonstrate acts of kindness and courage while persevering through a tough year together. Community is more important now than ever and community is what sets Chesapeake Beach apart. Thank you for checking in on your neighbors and taking the measures required to stay safe. Our theme for this year's State of the Town is protect, preserve and proceed. The town council unanimously took the necessary measures to protect the health and well being of residents by restricting access to town amenities while continuing to expand service levels. The town continues to review and implement legislation to preserve our small town charm and proceed forward with innovative ideas to improve the quality of life for citizens while making a positive impact on our natural resources. The town council staff and I welcome you to the twenty twenty one State of the Town address for Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Before I share the progress of the town over this past year, I want to share that these efforts would not be possible without the hard work and perseverance of our town staff. We are positioned well and look forward to continuing to serve the great citizens of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland in twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Hi Chesapeake Beach, I'm your town administrator, Holly Wall. This year, the State of the Town address is before you virtually. This effort is consistent with our goals throughout twenty twenty to ensure that we continue to provide you with information and make it as easily accessible as possible. Even though we're not able to meet in person, we value the ability to provide you with this information directly. Please note that at the end of this State of the Town address, there will be a link to the full document that citizens can review in full detail. We hope you enjoy this presentation and thank you for your trust in twenty twenty one. At the start of the pandemic, the town council passed an emergency resolution allowing for temporary procedural modifications for conducting town business. During this time, the town took the opportunity to strengthen our ability to reach town citizens through multiple forms of communication. Public engagement increased with ease of accessing public meetings virtually. These are measures the town plans to continue even as restrictions are lifted by both in-person and virtual connections between elected and appointed officials and the citizens of Chesapeake Beach. During this period and even today, we have such a great strength within our communities. An example of this strength and compassion was seen in the neighborhood of Chesapeake Village. Organized by a local family, the community gathered to post words of encouragement for healthcare providers, first responders and emergency personnel. To protect residents' ability to safely vote, the Chesapeake Beach Board of Elections hosted many options for safely casting votes in the town election. A virtual candidate forum was held in coordination with the Calver County Legal Women Voters. A new page was created on the town website to provide vital information to citizens related to voting and provide an additional transparency with candidate financial disclosure forms available for public view. To protect public health while maintaining access to town-funded amenities, the town council adopted Resolution R dash twenty dash three, which restricted access to the Chesapeake Beach Water Park and Bayfront Park. The Water Park was restricted to town and county guests only and Bayfront Park was restricted to town guests only. These restrictions provided local safe enjoyment for residents. Safety measures were implemented to include virtual training for staff, mask requirements, electronic registrations to manage attendance levels, online food ordering to decrease lines and COVID contact tracing. We are happy to report that these measures provided local employment opportunities for a hundred and eighty employees. We're even happier to report that there were zero COVID incidences at the park in general for the entire season. Of our employees employed for the year, Chesapeake Beach residents accounted for forty four percent of those and Calver County residents accounted for fifty five percent of those. To protect the interest of our local businesses, the town developed a new page on our website to communicate resources from state and federal agencies. The town coordinated with county and state to hold an informational virtual webinar, which local businesses were able to ask questions related to funding opportunities. The town developed a temporary outdoor seating application process to assist businesses with safely expanding outdoor seating options. Essential services continue to be prioritized by maintaining twenty-four seven emergency call operations for all critical infrastructure in town. Working through staggered shifts to limit staff exposure, essential employees continue to serve citizens. These vital services continue to be priority, protecting the essential assets of the town with over fifty miles of water and sewer lines, over two thousand three hundred water laterals, over two thousand three hundred sewer cleanouts and laterals, maintaining three water towers, thirteen sewer pump stations, one stormwater pump station and seventeen generators. Our Chesapeake Beach Water Reclamation Treatment Plant operated efficiently, again with zero spills, no violations and no incidences, achieving all permit levels. Twenty twenty was an important year to ensure that all citizens of Chesapeake Beach are properly counted in the census twenty twenty. The town achieved a higher self-participation rate this year and was recognized by the state of Maryland and the county. A higher response rate provides the town receives proper funding for critical services such as schools, road repairs, emergency response and hospitals for the next ten years. Safety improvements were completed at the Route two sixty one Harrison Boulevard Limerick Lane intersection at no cost to the town. These safety improvements provided additional travel lanes and turn lanes. The second maintenance dredge was completed during this administration in twenty twenty. The image shown on this slide is the DNR survey after the twenty twenty maintenance dredge was completed, ensuring the channel remains open for commercial and recreational access to over five thousand voters a year. The federal dredge and jetty wall repairs are currently in the planning process and expected to bid by the federal government in the fall of twenty twenty one. The town implemented the Housing and Livability Code, conducting inspections this year for the first time. Fifty-seven residential rental dwellings were inspected and thirty-seven licenses were issued. The town continues to preserve the tax savings offered to town residents as well as continues to decrease debt and expenses while increasing services. This year, there was a reduction for the fourth year in the row of property taxes, debt reduction of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in twenty twenty. Total debt reduction during this administration is four point one million dollars. One point nine million reduction in expenses in twenty twenty. And there's an expansion of services offered to town citizens, including increased yard waste collection to now take place year round, as well as additional bulk collection days of service. Preserving our small town charm could not take place without our code enforcement. Code enforcement has continued to rectify issues in town with great speed. In twenty twenty, the town officially acquired the deed to Callum's Field and the parking areas associated with the field. The image shown highlights in blue the area that the town acquired. The parcel is seven point two five acres of land with a twenty twenty assessed tax value of over two million dollars. Thank you to the county commissioners on their partnership with the town to make this acquisition possible. The town also preserved several assets within public spaces this year. Some of the notable upgrades are LED lighting upgrades within the Callum's complex as well as upgraded signage with maintenance friendly material for a clean and clear appearance. The town also has several vintage lighting displays that were renovated and upgraded to ensure that they last for many more years to come. In terms of preserving our environment, some of the notable, uh, accomplishments for the year uh, would be adding a hundred and fifty thousand oysters directly to the bay through our Seabox program, adding fifteen plus oyster reef balls to the bay and observing an oyster hatchery at Adner's that will provide spat for the Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society, also known as Seabox. In terms of education and outreach, the town hosted the third annual community mural project under the leadership of John Bacon, Chair of the Seabox Program and in coordination with Beach Elementary School and Wendy Hill Elementary School. The green team also planted several buffer gardens or rain gardens within the public spaces of town to provide further education on the use of buffer gardens or rain gardens to improve the quality of stormwater runoff before it reaches Fishing Creek in the Chesapeake Bay. The opioid abuse awareness coalition had an active year and adjusted their delivery in order to meet the social distancing requirements by offering virtual outreach sessions paired with awareness, awareness methods such as light the beaches and hosting the first annual health and wellness fair. The opioid abuse awareness coalition raises awareness about the opioid crisis and educates residents about substance abuse disorders, removes the shame surrounding this health crisis, so people seek help and get support from their community and connects people in need and their families with available prevention, recovery and support services. Proceeding forward, we are excited to speak further with residents as we finalize the master plan to improve safe walkability and cycling in town. The town held several outreach sessions to gain public input on walkability and a master plan. The town held virtual sessions using new technology called Sandbox where residents were able to interact directly by placing comments and sliding them onto the draft plan, allowing them to identify what they felt should be a priority project. Additionally, public comment was captured at several locations in town. Proceeding forward, the town approved the zoning permit for the new Beach Elementary School and will continue to coordinate with Calver County Public School on the project as it moves forward into construction. A factor in our coordination with Beach Elementary School is the safe routes to school. The town received grant funding from State Highway Administration to complete thirty percent design at sidewalks from Beach Elementary School, the south side of town at Chesapeake Village and from Beach Elementary School to the west side on Old Bayside Road. The town is now moving forward with a hundred percent design and construction and hopes to fall in alignment with the new construction of Beach Elementary School. The Planning and Zoning Commission held several public meetings related to the comprehensive plan update currently underway and expect to have a draft plan completed in the summer of twenty twenty one, shaping our town for years to come. Also proceeding forward, the town will focus on stormwater management planning, taking into account sea level rise within our coastal communities. Improvements will continue to be made to update aging infrastructure. Also proceeding forward, the Callum's Complex will play a priority focus for the town with plans underway at the Miller Loveless Park at Callum's Field to add a low-impact senior area, revitalize top lot, shade structures and green space. The town received the award of funding in twenty twenty in the amount of fifty thousand dollars towards this revitalization project. Thank you for your trust, Town of Chesapeake Beach. Again, we look forward to continuing to serve you.
Well, well, thank you, that was outstanding. I, I want to end my mayor's report by thanking Holly Wall for this presentation and, and thanking the entire town staff who worked three hundred and sixty-six days in the year twenty twenty to make this happen. So I applaud each and every one of you, thank you very much. You make us all look good. Next, we have, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission. Uh, we've read Chairman Brown's report, uh, if we have any questions, I'll begin with Vice President Fabry.
I, I have no comments at this time.
Okay, Keith?
No, no questions, thank you.
Greg?
Uh, yeah, I do have a comment, Larry, thank you for attending in person. I want to reiterate my comments from previous meetings. I know you, uh, volunteer board chairs aren't always able to make these meetings, uh, so don't forget that. Uh, so I, but I do appreciate you being here on person. The, um, I know that y'all are discussing, discussing some uh, details surrounding the short-term rental matter in town. Uh, and over the past few months, I've, obviously we've all been talking about this to a certain extent and, uh, myself and some colleagues have been discussing some potential, uh, innovative and strong, but debatable, uh, code changes. Um, and, uh, what I'd like to do, I'm gonna And what I'd like to do, I'm going to put those on a list. I'm going to forward them to Town Hall. And just in hopes that helps things along a little, because eventually I see this, eventually some point it's going to come to council. And the short of it would be, could be voted down. There could be, I would expect a debate or discussion regarding an investigation into allowing this to a limited extent. But spitballing some code changes, out-of-the-box thinking, just for everybody's consideration, particularly council, I'll send those comments to Town Hall and they can share with you and your group or Chris as they deem as appropriate. And again, I want to thank you for your service. I know you all have been working really hard. You're under a lot of pressure. There's some things that have kind of come out sideways at all of us here lately. So we're all going to be under the gun to accomplish, but to properly address comprehensive plan changes and get this thing cemented in the timeline prescribed. So thank you again for, and thank all your colleagues for me, please. Thank you.
Sure, will do. Larry?
Building on comments from Councilmember Morris, congratulations, I guess, maybe even condolences on everything that's come before P&amp;Z in the last year between trying to push comprehensive plan to a conclusion and now being sort of wrapped up with the short-term rental issues. Good job. Hang in there and hopefully the council can support you in any way possible. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Yeah, I echo the thanks and the hard work. I mean, we got a lot of information from Chris Chukubiac. And I'm very impressed at the progress that you guys are making. I give you as a leader a lot of credit and as well as your whole group there. So thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And lastly, Valerie?
Yeah, thanks, Larry, and thanks to planning and zoning. You guys have not had an easy year. And we recognize it. We appreciate your efforts. And I look forward to seeing the comprehensive plan in due time along with a discussion on Airbnbs and short-term rentals. So y'all have done a great job so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, and thank you, Chairman Brown. Next, Board of Appeals, no hearing held. Seabox, you've read John's report. If anybody on the council has any questions, please forward them to Holly. She'll try to get you an answer. Climate Change Advisory Group, Larry?
Real briefly, you heard earlier in the meeting, we're trying to work with the possibility of installing solar panels on top of these covers over part of the equipment at the water reclamation treatment plant. I'll just ask anybody who's listening in, if you have any suggestions of additional projects that the advisory group can look at, please send those to Town Hall and they'll be passed along to me. We look forward to advancing efforts to put in place projects to hopefully help protect our town going forward. I just wanted to say, Co-Chair Partik, anything to add?
Thank you, Larry, for that opportunity. No, not at this time. I also look forward to getting any suggestions that are out there and moving forward with this committee. Larry, with you. So thank you.
Thank you. Larry, stay right there. Economic Development Committee?
Yes, several things there. Just for everyone's information, the County, Calvert County Economic Development is going to be holding a virtual meeting on, I didn't write down the date. I'll post it later, but it's coming up later this month on the Prince Frederick Master Plan. So you can check the county website, and I'm sure there's information posted there on the dates, but it's sometime in February. Second thing, I listened in on the council meeting from Town of North Beach. Just a couple of things to point out there. Interestingly enough, Mayor Benton there also presented the 2020 State of the Town for the Town of North Beach, and he specifically expressed thanks to Mayor Mahoney for cooperative efforts during the pandemic, having the two towns work closer together. Some updates on things, the library groundbreaking is set for, at this point, estimated September of 2021 with about an 18-month construction period. The Route 261 project has been slightly delayed. It is now estimating completion in summer of 2021. And then finally, and most notably, Mayor Benton acknowledged that Mayor Mahoney won the census contest between the two towns and that he owes you tacos and margaritas. So good luck with that. Thank you.
He does. Thank you for bringing that up, Larry. Green Team, Valerie?
Yeah, no, we're fine at this time.
Thank you. Kellum's Revitalization Committee, Greg Morris?
What does that ring in my ears? Right now, we're just still at entry level here, spitballing some ideas. Got a centralized document, me and myself and councilmen. They have just been throwing some stuff in there, looking at emphasis on open space, either eliminating or severely truncating the chain link fencing of open green spaces. Scheduled an outreach informal meeting with Greg Disney from the Bucks Organization. That I'll be meeting with him shortly, just as an initial, get some ideas from them, what they're looking at. And engaging, actually, there's been some discussions about having RK&amp;K throw some out-of-the-box ideas. I'm also going to be reaching out to Chris, well, through Holly, Krista Chukubiac, to get all of his illustrations. His finely crafted illustrations he's put together for various concepts up there at that facility. We're very eager to investigate that and expand and actually have the committee be more than just me and Charlie. But thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness, Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So the Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition met on February 11th at 6:00 PM. You have several items to report from our partners as well as from us. I'll start with our group. And so number one, the roadside awareness signs that we've been working on. We finally have an approved design. We've been working with the Calvert County Health Department on coming up with that. And so it was very exciting that we finally have agreed upon one here. And thank you, Holly, for sharing that with the council and the folks who are viewing this. But the plan is to purchase two of these. They'll be double-sided with the message, and they'll be movable. We'll have metal poles with, you know, I guess, but Jay has a plan for how this can work. They'll have wind holes in them to help reduce the strain on the signs. But the idea is to be able to move these around from place to place in town, starting probably putting one in front of Town Council, Town Hall, excuse me, and the other near the sign at the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. And then quarterly, moving those around, say, to the median strip along 260 would be one area where we could put them, maybe on the fence at Kellum's Field for a while, maybe then over near Beach Elementary School someplace or near the Bayfront Park, that kind of thing, to catch new eyes and just hopefully raise awareness in other places. This took a while, as I mentioned before, because previously it was Rapid Recovery Response, I believe, was the kind of the title of their program, and they've changed it now to Calvert Crisis Response. And so it took a while for that rebranding to happen. The number, I do believe, is the same, but I do have a new website that you can see there. You know, our emphasis is on substance abuse, but they're also, that's a number you can call if you're having a mental health crisis, which has been on the increase during COVID-19 isolation, but also marital issues, whatever kind of, you know, kind of health, family crisis you may be having. You can call this number and they will direct you to the appropriate person. Of course, still call 911 if you're having a, an emergency that needs immediate attention by the police or ambulance or fire department. But for more of the mental health crisis and substance abuse treatment options, you know, should call this. So anyway, we're real excited to finally have this done. We hope to have those in our hands in the next month or so. So thank you, Holly. You can take that down. And we've also been working on those clean, window clean signs, getting those from the Calvert County Health Department to distribute to the businesses. Again, that's kind of caught up in this rebranding. They had some, but it had the old information on it. And so we're hoping they're going to be ordering some new ones. If not, we may still distribute the old ones and when the new ones come in, ask folks to replace those. So that's kind of where we're at. The Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse is going to be building upon the Purple Light Event that we had in the beaches last year. Since it was such a success, they're going to try to do it county-wide. Well, they're going to focus on Prince, the Twin Beach area again, Prince Frederick and Lusby. And I believe they're going to try to purchase 1,200 light bulbs that they're going to be giving out to folks to doing, light up the county or those areas of the county. So we should all be proud about what we started here in the beaches area this past year. I believe it was you, Charlie, that had asked about the signage at the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. It was taking a while for that to get changed. They have gotten the numbers changed, the year. So it's now reflecting 2021 numbers. But the year still has not been changed. I'm going to be trying to do a temporary fix on that here when the weather clears a little bit. But the temperature needs to be above 50 degrees for them to do the permanent change of those year numbers. But we're going to try to get that up there. Let's see. The, oh, here's a, here's a big one here that I wanted to bring up. So the Chase B. Mattingly for the Fight Incorporated, a nonprofit group that Sandy Mattingly started in honor of her son. They've been working with, and she is a member of our coalition. Her group has been working with another group called Team Sharing Group on a, on a new campaign. And so building upon what was done in New Jersey, they approached Maryland Senator Michael Jackson with this idea of flying the flags at half-mast on August 31st, which is Overdose Awareness Day, and making that a state law. He was very receptive to that idea and has submitted a bill, and it now has a bill number, SB 0936, that should be going before the Education, Health, and Environmental Affairs Standing Committee for review and hopefully passed on to go for a vote. Waiting to hear if that's going to happen, but we are asking everybody to write their representatives in support of this bill. We think it's a great idea. It's a, by supporting the passage of this bill, we can help bring more awareness to the substance use crisis facing our state and community. We can help reduce the shame surrounding drug-related death and addiction and acknowledge the grief felt by the families and friends by remembering those we have lost on that day. And of course, September is Recovery Awareness Month. So that would just feed right into that. And so, you know, I would, I will ask, you know, of course, I ask everybody personally, hopefully you will write your representative and write Michael Jackson, of course, in support of this bill and the members on that committee. But I was also, wanted to suggest that perhaps the council send a joint, joint letter in support of the bill as well. But I just put that forward. Our next meeting is March 11th at 6:00 PM virtual. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Keith, I'm going to contact you after this call about, about, you know, I meet you on my formal supporter as the mayor behind that bill. I, you probably know, I do testify for bills occasionally in person. It's not COVID. And I'll, I'll see what I can do to include the council as well, but we'll, we'll work on that. The timing will be important, so I'll contact you soon about that.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Mayor.
All right, very good. Walkability, Community Advisory Group. From the man that I see walking around town every day, Charlie, thank?
I'm walking. I don't always walk by your house, Pat, but it does happen occasionally. So we had a pretty busy week. We got our, what we hoped was the final draft or final report, really not a draft, from our contractor, RK&amp;K. This was to be the master walkability plan. It's very close, but our members did an excellent job at reviewing it in fine detail and found everything from typos to references that weren't consistent to one or two significant tweaks that we wanted to make to the master plan before we put our stamp on it. And so we sent those changes back with Holly's help yesterday or this morning. And we hope to have, we hope to have those turned around pretty quickly. We were very clear in our direction, so it's not going to be hard for them to go through the document that we sent and find the changes that we're asking to be made. When that is done, and Mayor, I will reach out to you. I might even try to do it tomorrow, but definitely early next week. You know, our next goal would be to put forward a resolution to the council to adopt, formally adopt this master walkability plan and simultaneously get it in the hands of planning and zoning so that it can be integrated there. So those are our two next big tangible steps. And then we want to start picking the projects and finding the money. And so that's why I'm at your house, Pat. I'm looking under rocks and seeing where I can find, where I can find some.
Money, you're not going to find it in my house.
And that's all I have for walkability. I want to, I want to say one other note regarding what Greg had said about Kellum's Field. We are interested in, and it is our plan to reach out to RK&amp;K. I believe that they did a great job. Councilman, Councilmember Fabry can certainly weigh in here. And, and we would recommend continuing an engagement with them to perhaps provide some work on the Kellum's Field revitalization project. So we will look for some ideas to present to you guys to say, hey, are we interested in doing this? And try to move that forward. So stay tuned for that. Greg, I feel free to jump in there. I didn't mean to stop on anything that you said. So let me know if that was out of line with what your expectations were. And otherwise, that's it for me.
Thank you, Charlie. We have no unfinished business, no new business. At this time, I ask, is anybody in the public that wants to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Please, please do so. Hearing none. Council, lightning round. I'll begin with Dr. Bodine.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to inform or remind the residents that starting Monday, pre-K through sixth grade are going back to school. At least half of the population in those grades. There's a week and b week. So just respectfully, you know, watch out for the school buses. And more and more grades are going to be going online, eventually through high school. And so just keep an eye out for that. And then I want to reiterate that when that volunteer opportunity comes up to drive those ATVs, I'm your personal guest. I really am. I'll do your snow removal for you. And that's all. Thank you.
Charlie?
To the space geeks in the audience, the perseverance has landed. And I have a feeling that Keith was probably watching that, too. I'm just guessing. I don't know. Very exciting. So if you haven't seen it, I highly recommend you find it on a lot of different websites. They've got kind of some neat footage out there. So that's kind of exciting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Yeah, I went back and checked my calendar. That meeting on the Prince Frederick Master Plan is Thursday, February 25th at 7:00 PM, if anyone is interested. I hope everyone is safe during the storms. The good news was mentioned briefly at the beginning of the meeting. First day of spring, March 20th, four weeks from Saturday. So hang in there, everybody. Thank you.
That's a good thought. Thank you, Larry. Greg? That's a good thought. Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah. Spring is, it's hard to see it on days like today. Spring is right around the corner. But I've been trying to be consistent with my message, and I'd like everybody to share with your friends and colleagues. And COVID, the corner is ahead, and we will be turning that corner at some point. It's still very serious and deadly, folks. So please exercise social distancing, mask up. Wearing masks says that we're serious about caring about each other. So we've got a ways to go here. But we see the light ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, Mayor Holly, town staff, great, great State of the Town presentation. That was really cool. And thank you again for all your support, Jay and staff, for the street clearing and the multiple storms we've had over the several months or several weeks here. And with that, I just wish everyone is safe and a great evening, what's left of it.
Thank you, Keith. And lastly, Council Vice President Fabry?
Yes, I too want to congratulate everyone on a safe and successful year as illustrated in that State of the Town report. And in fact, Mr. Mayor, I think it's clear that that was the best State of the Town report that you've done. So congratulations and thank you, Holly, for that. I also want to make a recommendation when. Say again?
I said, I wanted to interject a thank you to Holly as well.
Yes, yes. And so as a recommendation, when you get those tacos and margaritas from Mayor Benton, I think you should drink the margaritas from the mayor's cup. And we've had that for a number of years. So enjoy that margarita out of the mayor's cup.
I'll tell you what, we'll have to have seven straws to include the six members of the council.
There we go. But on more of a serious note, you know, as it was alluded to earlier, we've got a busy few months coming up. We're going to consider and pass five budgets and as well as a number of very important initiatives to consider, both at our level and with our committees. So I really look forward to continuing all of our important work together and start that process where we can have even better town report, State of the Town report next year.
Thank you, sir. On that note, just your motion to.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it, everybody. Good night. Be safe.
Good night.
Night.
Did somebody ask me to stay late on the?
Yes.
Let me, let me just stop the recording here.